Okay, alright, so thanks for joining us today. And if you can, just to kind of get the ball rolling, tell us a little bit about, I mean, I think Allie and I are familiar with your background, but I'm not sure both my colleagues will be as much. But so, so give us a little bit of your highlights and kind of what things might contribute to helping you serve on the school board and why you made the decision to to jump in now?
Alright, so um, gosh, to start a little bit, I grew up in Northwest Iowa and went to school at Iowa State. And while I was there, I met a young man from Bellevue, Iowa. So ended up being married to him. And we, we did live in Northwest Iowa for 15 years at the beginning of our marriage and then moved to Dubuque 19 years ago last week. So in the time that we've been in Dubuque, gosh, right around the time that we moved here, I had a job that helped me to identify that one of my greatest passions and what I think is kind of my life's purpose is the well-being of children. So I was the executive director for Every Child Every Promise, a small nonprofit, for just a little while here in Dubuque. But that really helped for me to kind of cement my passion about what's really important to me in my life's work. So after that, I went to work for the Dubuque Community School District. While I was at the district, I had a few titles, but they were all related to be to behavior. So I think my first title was Behavior Support Specialist. And when I left the district 10 years later, my title was Director of Behavior and Learning Supports. For a couple of years in there, I was also the Equity Coordinator for the School District. So did a lot of work with all of our buildings when I worked for the School District, ensuring that children felt safe and had welcoming atmospheres for them to for their learning. After that, I took the position of CEO for the Mental Health and Disability Services of the East Central Region. That was six years ago. The reason I actually took that job and left the School District was because I wanted to make a difference in more children's lives. So when I was here in the Dubuque Community School District, I had the impact for, you know, 10,000 children's lives. And when I went to the region through policy and funding, I could impact more children, ensuring that they, you know, had the appropriate resources for their behavioral health needs. So it was a job that I was really passionate about. Life changed a little bit in behavioral health services in Iowa. So in last winter, I chose to to leave there and come to work for ECIA. So now I'm the Executive Director of ECIA here in Dubuque, serving Dubuque, Delaware, Clinton, Cedar, and Jackson Counties. And my role here, I think, really helps me to identify, not, kind of it complements my passion for children's well-being in that, you know, the role as the CEO of the region and now the Executive Director of ECIA, I have a lot of experience with strategic planning and decision-making and leadership and administration. And so I think that coupled with my, my passion for children's well-being is what will make me a good school board member should I be elected. I, I wanted to be, I wanted to be on a school board for about 20 years. And 20 years ago, my children were little and I didn't, I never wanted people to think that I was running for a school board to get something for my children. I always wanted to, you know, be able to approach this objectively. And, you know, when I worked for the district, then I couldn't run for a school board. And, and about almost six years with the, with the mental health region, I was out of Dubuque a lot. You know, I had nine counties and I traveled a lot. So now that I'm, that I'm here more often, I still have five counties that I work with, but a little bit smaller area. I feel like the time is now for me to to contribute and that's really what I want to do. I want to help our school district. I believe in our school district, I always have. And I want to support our administration and try to, try to make it the best place for kids, for their, for their education and their, their well-being.
Just, did you say, was it last year you took the job with ECIA?
Just this year, yeah. I've been with ECIA for four months now.
Okay, and can you kind of give me the nutshell of the kinds of things that ECIA works on? I, I should know that, but I know there's, it's kind of a lot of different, different arenas that ECIA pops up.
I would love the opportunity to talk a little bit more about ECIA. So it, ECIA stands for the East Central Intergovernmental Association. And we are like a, an extension of city and county government. And we help cities and counties in our five-county area to, to implement programs and to draw down federal funding. So programs that we specifically help with our cities and counties are planning in transportation, housing, homelessness services, community development and economic development. So we are real grassroots out in our communities, working with the people who, who are elected officials and volunteers and staff of our, of our cities and counties to help them to really to strategically plan for how their communities are better places for families and for people to live.
Mm-hmm, okay. And, and you said you, your own kids were young, you, you had kids in the school district then?
Yeah, so I, I have two daughters, my daughters Emma and Annie. Emma and Annie went, came up to, when we moved here, they were in fifth and third grade. And so through eighth grade, they went to Holy Family. Our daughter Emma went to senior high school, our daughter Annie went to Waller. And in our family, the, the decision of where a child goes was a parent decision because we thought the parents had the child's best interest in mind. And each girl went to the high school that, that she needed.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, and so, so tell us a bit about, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of particularly, I guess, intrigued about, you know, your background with mental health services and kind of the time you, you've been around kids and in the district. I would imagine you've seen quite a bit of, of change in terms of kind of the mental health needs of kids and as they have grown in, in the district and in other, other groups stepping up to sort of answer that, that need. Can you talk a little bit about that and maybe where the district stands today and what, where you think it could improve?
I'll talk about that for one day, maybe. Yeah, so I would say actually that children's needs probably haven't changed. I mean, I think all children need to feel safe. I think all children need to feel supported. All children need to feel loved and cared for and nurtured. So the needs themselves hasn't changed, but challenges to those needs have changed. I think that, you know, we have, I have a great concern that not just in Dubuque, but in our state, in our country, that we have a lot of people and adults who are dysregulated, who don't know how to calm themselves down if they get angry and who have, have a belief that they can say anything they want to anyone, even if it's offensive. And so I think that that has created issues for us in the country, right? I mean, we, relationships are key in all of our interactions. And when our relationships are stressed because we are unable to, to regulate ourselves or we're demonstrating that dysregulation to children, then that impacts their lives. And so then children also, just by, by their development, a couple of things that I've left off of about, about me is I have an undergraduate degree in psychology and my graduate degree is in youth development. So when you think about what children need to learn and feel safe to learn, we, they need those caring adults and they need adults who can model that they are regulated and that they can problem solve and they can do decision-making in a way that not only is safe, but protects the dignity of those that we're interacting with. And so when you say the challenges more to children's behavior health and brain health, then I think, you know, modeling from, from adults in their lives, adults not in their lives, but they see, you know, via media, gaming, whatever that might be, that we have the additional opportunity to bring that into children's lives. Now certainly that is a responsibility of all of us, right? Community, parents, and the school district. So I'd like to, I'd like to point out at this point, and you guys both know this, but I, I helped to implement the yoga mindfulness program in the Dubuque Community School District. We wrote a grant, we, we implemented that in conjunction with Challenge to Change. I helped to write that curriculum and, and design that program in the school district because we wanted to see if yoga and mindfulness helped children to self-regulate. We did a research study on that and we found positive response to yoga and mindfulness and helping the children to regulate themselves. In addition, I mean, the yoga and mindfulness has, has kind of, has changed, been involved and been embraced differently across the buildings over the years. But also right now, the Dubuque Community School District is doing the Teach to Heal Program with teachers, with staff, to help them to understand how to, how to be with children who are dysregu- dysregulated or children who have been through a traumatic experience in their lives and helping, we spent a lot of time in the years that I was at the district, district, learning about trauma, right? And trauma-informed care. And I, I think the school district's doing such a great job taking that a step further with the Teach to Heal. So now everyone understands trauma and the impact of trauma, not everyone, but a lot of people understand the impact of trauma on children's lives. And this next step is, okay, so what do we do about it? And how do we, how do we support children in a way that, that honors their experience as well as supports them to move beyond that?
Is there any, is there anything, are there things that you'd like to, to maybe advocate for on the board to see the district to, to do more of or do differently?
I think my primary concern is the safety of, of, safety of, of children, of staff, of volunteers, you know, all people in a school district. So just if we think from a developmental perspective, just it's typical Maslow's hierarchy, right? So if we are not feeling safe, so if we're not feeling safe, our attention gets to the brainstem, right? To just that, that survival mode in our brains. And when we're there, we can't get into that higher level thinking where we can learn. So we, we want to move that, that brain function for children and for teachers away from the brainstem, more to the, to the front part of their brain where they can absorb and they can learn. So if you don't feel safe, and if that's physically, if that's emotionally, if you don't feel safe, you can't learn. And the same for our teachers, if they don't feel safe, they're not their best teachers. You know, they're not teaching curriculum as best as they can if they don't feel safe either. So safety is, is something that's really important to me. When I, when I talk about that, I think it is related to the physical environment, that we have to make sure that we have enough supervision in the hallways, you know, passing time, even if it's not passing time, if there are children still in the hallways, we need to make sure that we have the supervision. And then we have to have the adults who are, feel prepared to deal with whatever it is that they might see in the hallway, right? If it's just a student who doesn't want to go to school, if, if it's other behaviors that are happening, we need to have adults who, who feel prepared to deal with that. We need children that understand that their best instruction is in the classroom. So physical environment, the, the, the architecture of the buildings is important too. So I'm sure you'll ask me a question about the bond, but the architecture of the buildings is super important for that physical safety. And then getting into that emotional safety as well. So I always believed when I worked for the school district, if, if we had a child who was so preoccupied, wondering what was going to happen at lunchtime, or wondering what would happen if they went to the restroom because somebody bullied them in the restroom, you know, the day before, then they weren't concentrating on the lesson that the teacher was trying to, to offer to them. So we need to address the emotional safety as well as the physical safety of our students and our staff in our buildings. And that's probably the thing that I feel most strongly about in a campaign for, for a school board.
Do you find the, the brain health rooms to, to be an antidote to some of those issues?
I think that the brain health rooms have been a wonderful addition in our school district. I will admit to some skepticism at the beginning because I worried that children would want to go into the brain health rooms and to be left alone, rather than to have somebody who was like, you know, actively engaging with them. But gosh, the data, I, I'd love to admit that I'm wrong, you know, the data shows that the students who use the brain health retreat rooms in our high schools do like that interaction and do like that there is an adult there to help them to, to regulate and to kind of, to get themselves calmed down and ready to go back to school.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, Allie, you want to jump in?
Yeah, well, we'll start with the, the question that you had been anticipating, which was talk to us a little bit about your thoughts on the upcoming bond referendum.
First of all, I mean, I, I want to give credit to the School District Administration and the current board. Obviously, by the time that if I am elected to the school board, this issue is going to be, it's going to be over, right? The, the decision is going to be over by then because the vote happens at the same time as the vote of the, for the, for the new school board. So that will be completed. The, the credit to the current administration and the current board is really the amount of effort and time that they put into reflecting on the bond two years ago. Was that two years ago, was that last year?
Two years.
It was two years ago, thank you. So the bond two years ago, they, I thought they did it, I think they did a really nice job of listening about why people voted against it or why people didn't even go to the polls and vote. And so really taking to heart the, the feedback and adjusting the bond, right? Because we're not seeing the same bond that we saw last time. And so adjusting that to be maybe a little bit more realistic and more amenable to our community. I think it's important that they have spent that time and did that due diligence to say, what do we need to be successful? And what do we need in order to ensure that we have the best facility plan going forward for our students? I really like the, the planning that went into that as far as even the forward thinking that we don't want to, the School District has committed save dollars for part of that project that they're saying, we don't want to use all of our saved dollars for the next three years. We want to hold some of it back so that if we have other facilities that we have to address in the next 20, 25 years, whatever that might be. So I think it's really good strategic planning at this point. And I think, you know, if you, if you live on the South Grand View or you drive on the South Grand View neighborhood at school time, either before or after school, the traffic has been a problem for years. And the, the design of the new building, I think will really alleviate that and help you, that's a lot safer for our students and it's a lot safer for parents when they're dropping their, their children off, so.
What kinds of things are you hearing in the community about it? Just anecdotally, or maybe as a candidate, do you think that, do you, do you, are you hearing good support for it or do you think it's going to be a challenge to, to pass this time?
Well, confirmation bias aside, you know, I mean, like, maybe I'm talking to people who, who do support it, but I feel like I'm, I'm hearing a lot of support. I think that what I'm hearing from the community is an appreciation for the, the, the change, the downsizing of the bond, rather than 150 million, down to the 70 million. And I think that the, the word, the understanding is there that this isn't about Jefferson and this isn't about Washington. This is about the fact that budget-wise, we have to do it, we have to do something different. And just for, from a facility perspective, that to have a, a building where, again, back to the architecture for safety, you know, in both of the, the, the current middle schools, Washington and Jefferson, there were places in those buildings when I worked for the School District that concerned me, that I thought there are, there are nooks and crannies where a person could hide and attack someone else. And just, just from a safety perspective, I think that the open architecture that is more prevalent these days lends more to, to the safety in a building. So I think that's a good thing. I'm trying to think, the other things that I've heard, I've, I also have heard people being appreciative of just the effort, you know, and the, the mindfulness, the intention that the, the current, the administration and the current board has put into demonstrating that they really listened from the last bond and changed their plan to, to try to move forward and to be more successful this time.
I'm curious about, so, you know, obviously, like you said, you know, when you, if, if you are elected, you know, you would take office, then the bond would already be decided. I guess I'm curious about what you see ahead for the district as far as, you know, your role in decision-making, both if, if the bond passes as well as if it, if it does not pass, because if it doesn't, there are, you know, certainly some, some challenging decisions that'll have to be made.
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how I understand your question, Allie, but I, like, what is, like, decision-making going forward specific to facilities or just in general?
I think, well, I mean, so I guess there's, you know, if, if the bond passes, you'll know, you'd be involved in a lot of kind of decisions moving forward with, you know, the projects. If, if it does not pass, there will be some decisions that have to be made as far as facilities as well as, you know, related to operational costs. I was just reading Elizabeth Kelsey, Preview is writing a big story about the, the bond referendum. So we were just talking about district finances half an hour ago. So I'm, I'm curious about, you know, what, you know, if, if, if it passes, you know, what you see, you know, your role being as well as if it doesn't pass, are, are there directions that you see the district having to go?
I think one of my commitments and one of my intentions here about running for, for the school board is to, to try to keep the, the role of a board member in mind and not to try to get so far into the weeds on certain issues. I trust the administration, I trust to, for them to give information to the school board that the school board needs to have in order to make the best possible decision. So I think I'm really trying to focus more on how do I bring forth, for, to contribute to the school board, my ability to, to think of the big picture, my ability to have reasonable decision-making and collaborative decision-making? So I don't know, like, I don't know, Allie, if, if the, if the bond doesn't pass, what's the decision that's next? I don't feel like I have all of that information. I've been away from the School District for six years from the inside of it, right? And, and I think that the administration would bring forward and, and school board members also have the responsibility to go out and find the information that they need to, but specifically on like, what needs to happen next? I think that I have a lot more learning to do before that I can contribute to that. And even if this, if the bond passes, okay, what's next? Deciding on an architect? I see, I don't even know if that, that, I've seen renderings, but I don't know if like, that contract is, is done. So I feel like there's a lot more information than I need and I need to, to visit with the other school board members, the current school board members on the thought process with the administration about, okay, what do you need from a board, from, from a policy, from that budgetary perspective in order to move this thing forward, whichever way the bond goes?
What do you, what do you feel like are, are the biggest challenges facing the School District? Obviously, we talked a little bit about the mental health piece, but what do you think are the biggest challenges that the district faces that, you know, you as a board member could, would, would potentially have a hand in some, some decision-making about?
Yeah, certainly the budget. You know, I think the, the history of below cost of living, you know, index in state supplemental aid for as many years as I can almost remember, that had, that's created a problem, you know? And I think our School District has done a really great job of managing that, of looking ahead and doing that predictive analysis about, you know, what, which their, their, their general fund, you know, look like if, if this, we, we got this much SSA, if we got that much SSA and really managing that. We've got great finance staff in the School District, but certainly budget, right? And, and unless the state legislator, you know, has the opportunity to offer more SSA, I think budget's going to continue to be an issue. As far as like my, my role there as a school board member, how I can help with that. First of all, I am quite familiar and comfortable at the State House and I will advocate for, for the Dubuque Community School District as well as public education in general at the State House. But also I think my experience running two organizations and, you know, at the, at the East Central Region, I had about a $30 million budget that I had to manage and, you know, also several million dollar budget here at ECIA. So I have experience with budgeting and using, using public dollars appropriately according to the, kind of the, the role, the wheelhouse of the organization that I'm involved in. So I think that, I think that will help because those are, those are going to be tough issues, a budget, no matter what. Other things too, that I think the School District is doing a great job and I support their continued is students' brain health support, using their best people. And we have so many really great people, the best people to make decisions on things like, like banned books and curriculum advancements. They're, they're really great people and very, very educated people, experts in, in certain topics. And I think the School District has a really nice process for tapping into those people to make sure that they make the best decisions going forward. But certainly curriculum, it, in, in relation to like, what kind of literature is allowed, you know, those are challenges too. And, and, you know, some of the social issues that the legislator has made some decisions on in the last couple of years that school districts have to implement. I think our School District has done a really nice job of not having this terrible knee-jerk reaction, but getting all of the information, understanding the, the law when laws have changed and then implementing with, with a lot of common sense.
Yep, that's exactly what, what I was gonna, gonna ask about too, some of those, some of those changes that, that came down, that they, the district, all the districts have had to navigate. You know, you mentioned books, that's, that's a big one. And, you know, I think the district really kind of took a wait-and-see attitude on, on some of that, not, not doing anything to rash any, and then I, I don't remember exactly what the, the legislation was regarding gender identity as it, as it pertained to the high schools or pertaining to younger students, but I don't know, was there, was there something, Allie, am I?
There was one around like the students' use of nicknames.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and gender identity was removed as one of the protected classes.
Yeah, that was statewide, yeah.
And, you know, I mean, that was, that was very, it was one of the 17 enumerated categories that we had in the School District in the, the anti-bullying and harassment policy. So because of that state law change, that did have to be removed. But I thought our School District did such a, a great job and the school board did a really nice job of, even though it was something that had to be done according to state law and we're always going to follow state law, but we did not diminish the message that all children are welcome and all children are supported in our School District.
Right, and I think even went to the point of, of, you know, voting on a statement, something like that.
That's a resolution.
Um, I wonder, I wonder what the impact, if any, has, has been, you know, if, if there's been any change in day-to-day life in schools because of, because of those, you know, changes in, in state law.
So I would say, you know, I mean, like, obviously, I'm not, I'm not in the buildings every day right now, but when I was there, we had 17 enumerated categories and that was state law, but we didn't get real hung up on what those categories were. Because if, if someone, if anyone in the building is treating someone in a way that, that they should not be treating them, those are things we want, always wanted to know about and wanted to address. Were we 100% effective always in addressing it? You know, you can't, sometimes you can't control people's behavior, but we always wanted to be aware and attempt to address it. And so 17 or 16 categories, right? That doesn't matter.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. If, if you were to, to gather up a, a group of district teachers, If if you were to to gather up a a group of district teachers uh right now and and ask them what what their concerns were um with district administration, do you do you have any sense of what they might say or what they might point to as an area that needs work?
I would, I would say, I would think, you know, if I were to speak for teachers, that they would also be concerned about funding. Um, I think from a public, you know, school perspective, the just the lack of that growth in funding for public schools has led to um feelings of not enough support. Because there have, you know, there are some things that have been changed and, you know, the the instructional um opportunities through the AEAs with the change in the AEAs has impacted teachers too. So it's not just about the money, right? And it's not just about whether or not they have raises, but it's also about what is the impact of less funding for for public education in Iowa? What ha- you know, the impact of that? So we want to make sure that teachers feel like there are enough resources for their professional development and for support for them. So um unfortunately, I think that's something that they would that they would talk about.
Ha- have you dug into at all the um levels of student achievement and where they stand today and whether they're sort of rising or falling and um, you know, what the district is doing to to shore up where there might be some shortcomings?
Yeah, um, I know in the most, gosh, has it just been in the last week or two weeks? That the most recent scores are out and really happy to see some of our, especially our lower-performing schools that they've seen an increase in student performance. Um it's it's interesting, it's just from a sociological perspective, it's been interesting for me to watch like the impact of the pandemic. And then now and now and, you know, I, at the time, I wondered how long it was going to be before we saw that rebound. And it was um just interesting that it took us two or three years to to see it level out and then the rebound. And I think with the scores this year that we're seeing, probably the greatest rebound that we have since the pandemic. So that helps me to see to to think that the school district, you know, they're on the right path. Um, I know that as as a as a social worker, when I went to work for the school district, I didn't know anything about pacing and standardized instruction across buildings. And when I could walk into any fourth grade class, you know, math classroom and see, no matter what building that I was in, that they were teaching the same lesson, that was that was something that was um pretty impressive for me. I think our our curriculum directors at the school district do a really good job of guiding that instruction so that um from a district perspective, right? Children are getting what they need, but also then in each building, the instructional coaches that we have and the additional support that we have for students that they get the one-on-one help that they need as well. So we have that that broad picture plan, but then we have those individualized plans. And I think that's the most important step towards student achievement as well as, of course, um parental support for student learning.
Uh, related to that, I I looked up to the side because I was just looking up the the school performance profiles as well as um graduation rates. And so the gradu- graduation rates um are um you know, are are up slightly from last year, um, though um going further back apparently is complicated because the state, it turns out, was incorrectly calculating graduation rates for forever. Um, but I, you know, I know that there were some challenges with graduation rates in the pandemic, so I'm curious about sort of your thoughts on how the district's doing it, getting students to graduation, as well as your thoughts on just how they're doing it, preparing students for whatever comes after high school, um, and what some of the focuses should be there.
So I think, first of all, like what they're doing about graduation rates, right? If children, children aren't in school, then they're they're not learning and they're not graduating. So I think the district has done a really nice job implementing the the um attendance, the new attendance law. And and we've really seen actually that attendance has improved. So that's really nice to see as far as like how is the district supporting children, um, students to to life beyond high school? I have a, I have a story that when when my children were little, when they were just starting school and their r- report card would come and there were two pages to it. And on one side, there was all of the the core subject areas. And the other side was the behavior, the classroom behavior. And I always used to tell my children, we're not gonna spend a whole lot of time on this, on those core curricular subjects because um we have really good teachers and everyone can learn in a school district. But I want to talk about this other side about your classroom behaviors, because it's really how we treat people in life that helps us, that prepares us for life beyond high school. And with the addition of the Teach to Heal and with the 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 intention around, you know, from yoga and mindfulness all the way to Teach to Heal and every day, the caring that our staff in our school district show to children that how much they care for them and how much they're invested in them and trying to teach them how to be people rather than just learners is what helps to prepare students for life beyond high school.
Am I correct in assuming you you have not uh run for a public office before?
I have never run for public office before.
Okay, um, you know, so that brings its its own own set of uh challenges and some things that, you know, uh, obviously, you've you've answered to stakeholders before. Um, you you've you've taken, you know, calls from people who who needed help and looking for advocacy and things like that. Um, but here you're you'll be in a position of making decisions and weighing what, you know, what voters, constituents have to say. Um, and, you know, what the greater good is, what your gut feeling is, what teachers say. Those those may not always uh agree. Um, you you mean s- sometimes, gosh, you know, when you think about some of the like redistricting and, you know, the epic battles that the district has has had to go through. Um, you know, those, there's really heartfelt feelings on on both sides. How do you think you'll you'll navigate that kind of decision-making and what will sort of guide your compass in in reaching a decision?
So, um, well, first of all, other than other than about two years of my career, my entire career has been in public service. I have, for my entire career, had to answer to the public. Um, even though this is the first time I've run for office, working for the public sphere, I've had, I've I I have just, I have thirty years of experience of listening to people, of listening to constituents and taking that those that that amount of input into mine for my decision-making. And then to the question about how do I use that for decision-making or how do I help that um, guide me forward is, the answer to that always is what's best for the kids. And if if the input that I get from our community um, that in conjunction with other school board members and the administration of this school district, if that's the right thing to do for kids, I'm always gonna decide that. And that's where I think that my experience having a board, I've been, you know, as the executive director of an agency, I have to respond to a board. And so I feel like I'm very comfortable with the role of the board and how much the board needs needs education and and needs communication versus uh, and then in complement to that about how much the board contributes and how much the board gets involved. And so my experience working with public boards as well as just thirty years of working you know, really for the public, I think um will lend itself well to this to my role in the school board.
Well, you've been out, um, you know, we're do working on your campaign. Tell me about what you've been doing um in terms of going out and meeting people in the community. What have you been doing to kind of connect with voters, learn what's important, what the issues are that are important to them?
Yeah, um, I think I think campaigning changes a little bit as we get more into technology in our in our culture. So certainly I have a I have a Facebook page, I have a website, and I've got signs that are that are going out this week. And my signs have my website on that. So I'm really trying to communicate a lot through through the website as well as um just being present at a lot of community events lately. And not just lately, it's part of my job too. So I've always kind of been present in the community and and really engaged and involved. So trying to talk to people as much as I can. I've got a couple ads coming out and um, you know, other events that I have scheduled to to try to share. For me, my why, why I think it's important and why I think I would be a good school board member. And certainly participating in in things that I'm being invited to. So I had a I had a interview, a similar interview with the with the teachers' union this last weekend and looking forward to the League of Women Voters event that's coming up in a couple of weeks.
Is there um, i- if you had to, could you identify, uh, is there a current board member that you feel that um you kind of are aligned with, that that would be somebody similar to to kind of how you would um uh approach the the seat?
Oh, that's a really great question. I would say that, you know, I know all of the school board members pretty well, um um, with the exception of uh Dr. Sarah. I don't know her as well. The rest of them I know really, really well. So is there one? I think I'll look to all of them to be mentors for me, but I also think it's really important for me to be my own decision-maker. So I don't know necessarily yet that I align necessarily. Um, a year from now, I might be able to tell you my vote is similar to, you know, so-and-so's. But I will, I will look to all of them to be mentors.
Is there any votes that they took in recent years that you think you might have uh might have had a different opinion on or gone a different direction than, you know, not to say they necessarily got it wrong, but that you would have you would have looked at it differently?
You know, one of the reasons that I that I chose uh to run now, I've explained the reasons why I chose to run now, but why, and I don't know if if you were paying attention, but I I submitted my paperwork the very last week and I did that intentionally. I had my paperwork ready for several weeks, but I did it intentionally because I was not, um, I did not want to challenge an incumbent. Because I think that the school, the current school board are really good people and they've done, they've answered the questions and they've made the decisions to the best of their ability to with the dis- with the information that they had at the time. So it was only when I felt pretty confident that Katie Jones wasn't going to change her mind and submit her paperwork that I actually submitted mine. Because I support, I support this current school board. I think they've done a good job. I ca- there's not one particular vote, Amy, that you're asking about that I can think of because I I think they're all good people and they they've made the best decision that they could with what they had.
A- anything that uh we haven't asked you about that that you'd like to share that you think might be helpful for voters to know?
Well, I would, I would like to say that two years ago, um, your paper did select me as a woman who makes a difference in our community. And I mean, it was such a great honor. And that's the, that's the type of energy that I'm eager to bring to the to the school district uh as a member of the Dubuque Community school board. I think that um I like, I like change, but not for change's sake. I like change when it advances the mission of an organization forward. And ha- having that type of attitude to make a difference in our community, to contribute to our community is one of the things I'm most looking forward to on the school di- on the school board.
Okay, I think we're good, Ally. Any any other thoughts or good?
I think I'm good.
Anything that I didn't answer well enough, deeply enough, that you want to come circle back to?
I think, I think we're good. Um, yeah, yeah, appreciate your time and and your willingness to to step up and and continue your public service, uh, this time, uh, potentially uh putting yourself out there for elected office and potentially serving in that capacity, so.
Yeah, it's a little scary, but because I've never done it before, but but, you know, if it's right for kids, then I want to do it. And and uh, this is, this is an avenue for me to to bring that passion forward. Since I'm not there as an employee anymore.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you both. Good to see you.
I do appreciate it.
All right, bye-bye.